Well, good morning and welcome to the Linwood Times candidate interview with Linwood City Council candidates for position two, Nas Rashkabi and Patrick Decker. I am your host, Linwood Times reporter Beau Brusco, and I'm joined with Linwood Times publisher, Mario Lotmore. So we're going to begin with a brief bio of both of you, so starting with Nas. Her professional experience includes, she has experience in business and human resources management, fundraiser, art curator, and community health center. And she holds a Bachelor's of Science in Science Biology from the University of Washington. For community service, her community service includes being the former Chair and Vice Chair of Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for the City of Linwood from 2017 to 2021, International Humanitarian Assistance to Women and Children from 2003 to 2013, and community involvement in the Puget Sound area for over 30 years. So Patrick Decker has been a resident of Linwood for over 30 years. He is married to his wife of 27 years, who is a first-generation immigrant from Thailand. They own a home here and have raised their three sons in this community. Patrick is employed at Microsoft in the financial group focusing on strategic enterprise agreements. He's a graduate of the University of Washington, Henry M. Jackson School of International Studies, with a double Bachelor's degree in Asian Studies and Chinese Language and Literature. He is fluent in Mandarin Chinese, and for fun, last year he read the classic Chinese novel Journey to the West in Chinese. He is also a third-degree black belt in Taekwondo and was ranked nationally for two years. Patrick has been active in Linwood, in the Linwood community for as long as he has lived here. He is currently on the Linwood City Council and is a member of the Linwood COPS and clergy organization. He previously served on the Planning Commission and Civil Service Commission, as well as being a mentor for students at both Linwood High School and the University of Washington. Patrick has had the opportunity and blessing of living in many places around the world. While young, he spent two years in Japan and then a good chunk of his childhood on the beaches of Southern California. His junior year of high school was spent in Compton, California, and his senior year in Yuma, Arizona, where he worked as a field laborer harvesting cotton, vegetables, wheat, and other crops. He subsequently lived for three years in China during one 12-month period, visited over 20 cities in China from Xiang.
Xiong.
Xiong, as well as multiple cities in India. Thank you. For fun, Patrick likes to spend time with his family, hiking, backpacking, and traveling. He is also an avid sailor, and you will often find him and his family sailing Puget Sound. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'll ask the first question to Nas, and then I'll pass it off to Patrick. All legislative and policy powers are vested in the City Council. What inspired you to run for office and what will be your top three priorities if elected?
Good morning. What inspired me to run for office was that I chose Linwood as my home, and that was inspiration enough for me to be involved with the community. However, I joined the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission over four years ago, and the inspiration came working with the leadership of the city like Mayor Nicholas Smith, Councilmember Christine Frisell, Councilmember Ruth Ross, Councilmember Sessions. All of them truly inspired me to run for this position. My top three priorities for the city are growth management and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place as our city continues to grow. My second most important issue is safety, where all are welcome, which I was the initiator of the campaign of all are welcome for our city, so that all the members of our city do feel welcome in our city. So safety is a very important issue for me, to make sure that all the members of our community feel safe. And also food safety and shelter safety is also another issue. That's part of the safety that goes with that. And being in healthcare and having seen the disparities of COVID, healthcare equity is my third topic on the agenda, and it's the most important issue for me. Again, that goes for including all and making sure that everyone in our city is thriving.
Excellent, thank you. And Patrick, same question to you. What inspired you to run for office and what will be your top three priorities if elected?
This is not the first time I've run for office in the City of Linwood. I did run previously quite a few years ago. The issues we faced then were similar to what we face now. At that time, we had already begun planning for the growth we knew that were coming. I was on the Planning Commission. I'd served as Chair there for a term. We did a lot of the downtown zoning at that time, where we actually laid the overgrid of the plans of what Linwood could become in the future. So a lot of the development we're seeing now is a result of that early work on the Planning Commission. I'm running now because there is so much change coming to Linwood. That growth is going to overwhelm us if we're not ahead of it. If we're not planning now for the next 10 years, we'll be behind. I think we're a little behind now. If I look at our infrastructure and what we're trying to build now, we're trying to rush through before the light rail concludes. I think a lot of that should have been completed already, and had we been able to get all of the zoning in place and the construction infrastructure that we had planned, we would be in better shape today than we actually are. My primary emphasis is going to be public safety. There are a lot of outside elements coming into Linwood, being pushed north from Seattle, coming south from Everett, and from other places as well. There isn't a day that goes by that we don't hear of new challenges to our safety for our homes, for our families. The tragedy of Tesh Paul being murdered, I realize that wasn't in Linwood, but it was very close to Linwood. I used to brag that the worst thing that happened around Linwood was maybe a car break-in or something fairly innocuous. But these days, more and more violent crime of all types. I saw pictures of a park cleanup recently. The number of needles that were just in and around the park is just astonishing. It's not as safe as it used to be. Public safety, we've got to make sure that we, as leaders, are emphasizing this has to be a safe community. We have to invest to make sure that our families can be out and around the community in our parks and doing. I'm also emphasizing infrastructure to make sure that our traffic flows better, our roads are in better shape. So public safety, infrastructure, and managing this growth to make sure we stay ahead of it, and we control the growth. The growth doesn't control us.
Excellent. All right. This next question is just a short 30-second responsible ask. Patrick first, and then I'll pass it on to Nas. What do you feel are the top concerns facing small business owners in Linwood, and what do you propose to address those concerns?
Well, easily, the most pressing concern right now is the ability to hire. I mean, anecdotally, I went to pick up a Blizzard just the other day, and they had to close early because they didn't have staff to be able to stay open as long as they were supposed to. There are so many reasons why people are not entering the workforce. That's going to impact us today, but even more importantly, five years down the road, we won't have had the influx into the workforce that we need today so that they become senior members of the workforce and are able to advance the businesses in Linwood based on that experience. So Linwood, I love this pre-apprenticeship program that we're partnering with the City of Edmonds and some others with, to be able to offer free pre-apprenticeship training to residents of Linwood and the area around here. Huge, huge opportunity for particularly individuals who are financially challenged. They can start this pre-apprenticeship and graduate to great-paying jobs right here in Linwood. So that is really where my emphasis will be, to help those businesses.
Excellent. And then would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. What do you feel are the top concerns facing small business owners in Linwood, and what do you propose to address those concerns?
Post-COVID, a lot of the businesses have been suffering because, as we all know, everybody stayed home and didn't go to many businesses for the reasons that we all know why. I think the most important thing that we can do is to make sure that we support the businesses so that they can sustain their economic growth, so that they can continue to keep the doors open, as they say, and make sure that we will be supporting the businesses that we have to make sure that we can be buying local, supporting local, and making sure that our businesses have the customer base that they need to have. And also, all the states and federal funds that are available to the city that we can share with the business owners to make sure that they can continue to thrive and not have to close their doors. I think that would be the most important thing we can do for small businesses.
Excellent, thank you. This next question, we'll try to keep the answers brief again, with just the 30-second answers, but excluding, and I'll ask you this first, and then I'll pass it off to Patrick, sorry. Excluding changing housing and zoning codes, what would you propose to do to make Linwood better for seniors?
Well, I don't think it's fair that you are excluding the zoning, and that's one of the tools in our toolbox as City Council members. But I think health and financial stability of our seniors must be very important to us, as we see our seniors are more and more active, so we want to make sure that we can continue to support that. So what I'm proposing is that we don't have to exclude our senior citizens so that they exclusively have to live in senior citizens' homes. They can be in mixed-use home settings, that they can have access to shopping centers, that they can have access to senior center for exercises, that they can have accessibility to public transportation, so that they continue to have an active life. And one of the most important things that I think as a city leader I would propose is to make sure we have classes and courses for our senior citizens to keep up with the technology. Because as we keep growing in the technology, I see that a lot of our senior citizens have challenges of how to deal with that, and I think that's very important for them to know how to do this, to maneuver through life. But working with parks and recreation and making sure that our sidewalks are accessible to public transportation, and continue to keep our senior citizens active and part of the community.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and Patrick, what do you feel, sorry, excluding changing housing and zoning codes, what would you propose to make Linwood better for seniors?
Infrastructure. If you look around our city, the ability to get around in our city for seniors. My father lives in Stanwood, but he's down here quite often. The quality of our sidewalks, our roads, the ability to cross from one section of the city to another, even crossing a street, is not very good for people who maybe don't have great mobility. We actually don't need to change zoning. When we set up zoning in the city center 10, 15 years ago, we did it with the intent to make the city center very walkable. And so the way that it's designed, we're going to have a promenade that goes through there. There will be a ton of services all through that. Retail space on the bottom, housing up on top. They'll be able to go from housing directly to those retail without having to cross streets, without having to go across traffic. Very accessible. It will be built per ADA, of course, but even beyond that, it will have a host of different activities and opportunities for seniors to participate in, where they don't have to drive, they don't have to get on a bus, they don't have to go anywhere. They come out of where they live, they step right down to whatever the activity that they are interested in, whether it's shopping activity, it's all right there for them. The city center is planned perfectly for our seniors and those with accessibility issues.
Excellent. In what ways could the city's comprehensive plan be improved to facilitate Linwood's housing action plan of an additional 9,826 units by 2044?
I think the housing plan actually is reasonably solid. We've already planned for some high growth in the construction, so allowing the buildings to go taller. That will help keep that growth out of the family neighborhoods, keep all that traffic close to the transportation hubs where it's really best. I mean, it minimizes the number of cars, we don't have commuters going through our communities. But one area that has surprised me is that the city has not been more aggressive in the annexation process of the areas around the city. There actually is quite a bit of open land, right on the borders of the city, that in order to accommodate some of this growth, Linwood should annex that near-term. We have to do the impact studies, we have to do the financial impact studies and such, but right now, it's fairly unmanaged by the county, and they tend to just build things. And I would much prefer we annex those, bring those under the legislative authority of the city, and then we can bake those into our comprehensive plan, and we can control the growth in those areas, what we want it to look like, what it should look like, and how it can complement our downtown corridor rather than just being ancillary to it. Because it really could be very disruptive if the county doesn't build in a way that complements what we're doing. So my interest really is to ensure that we create the infrastructure, we make this a safe place, so the builders want to come, the businesses want to come. That's essential to the overall plan. But then let's get a hold of that property that's outside of the city limits, just outside our limits, and make sure we govern and control and grow that the way that we really should.
I'm going to ask a follow-up on this. So which areas are you thinking about?
Specifically, the areas across from Fred Meyer and 164th right now. There's a large, Echo Barker owns the property right now. I know that it's either for sale or for lease, but there is more out there. Also, directly north of the city at Alderwood Mall Parkway and 164th, where the nursery used to be, quite a large lot of land right there, and directly north of that, there's a house that burned down that now has some cars parked in it. It's kind of an ancillary parking lot for a car dealership. So a lot of property in those areas that could be brought under planned growth rather than lack of growth at this point.
All right, thank you. And then Nas, I'll reread the question for you. In what ways could the city's comprehensive plan be improved to facilitate Linwood's housing action plan of an additional 9,826 units by 2044?
I think the planning department has really done a great job so far, and as we can see, all the buildings that are going up in the city center and the whole area that is growing, I think it's really solid, and they've done a really good job. But going forward to 2044, I think it's very important that we produce housing that meets the needs of the community and make sure that we remove the systematic barriers that has been in place for many of the Black Indigenous people of color historically, so that we can have more people join our city and prepare for continued growth and increase the quality of life in Linwood. Those are very important to make sure that they go hand in hand as we keep growing. We want to make sure we keep the quality of life in Linwood up. And we have to diversify housing plan and housing options so that people can buy their homes, that they don't have to just go either to city center or to the residential areas, that they can have the options of maybe wanting to have a townhome right in between these two areas. And increase the area of Linwood by adding unincorporated Linwood to the city. That's also very important, because there is so much land out there, as mentioned by Patrick. I think it's very important to make sure we incorporate that area. North of Highway 99 on 164th, going up on Lincoln Way, there is a lot of construction happening in that area, and it's really not, it doesn't seem to be controlled, it doesn't seem to be how the design is, it doesn't, there are some residential homes, and then there is like 30 townhomes next to it. It just doesn't seem to have any rhyme or reason. I'm not sure how Snohomish County is controlling that, but I think it would be really great to get the unincorporated areas to be part of Linwood so that we have more autonomy over how we go forward with that.
And I have one follow-up question. You mentioned systemic barriers. Would you like to share what those barriers could be, or want to put an example of that?
Right. Historically, a lot of the Black and people of color have not been given loans to be able to afford homes, to buy homes, and we need to remove those systematic barriers so that they could have accessibility to purchasing homes in the Linwood area. And with these 9,826 units that we are having by 2044, we would like to have a diverse community, be part of that, and make sure that we do have the diversity in our community.
Excellent. Well, and so talking about this growth, the next question for you, Nas, and then we'll pass it off to Patrick. What do you think is the most important infrastructure project needed in Linwood right now?
Okay, I think, as I said, managing the growth is the most important part of our infrastructure management. And I think right now, the most important thing is to make sure that we support the area that the light rail is coming to. So to make sure that we have the traffic control, we have the parking lots that we need to have in a hub with a projected of 67,000 riders daily. That's what the projection is. So with that in mind, we need to upgrade the infrastructure to make sure that we have the areas necessary to support that hub. And also, replacing aging old infrastructure for the sewer and the water. I think the health of our community is very important also, so we need to make sure that the old infrastructure is being updated so that we can continue to be a city with healthy living people.
Excellent, thank you. Do you want me to reread the question for you, Patrick?
No, I think I'm good with the question there. The key infrastructure areas really are ensuring that the city grid streets through the downtown area are properly invested in and that they're built properly. We're already discussing getting a grid street in about, I think it's about 194th and 43rd. What we're trying to do is create a more walkable environment down there, where you don't have these massive intersections that all the traffic and pedestrian traffic is going through, as well as the cars and the big buses and trucks. We also need to get investment from the state and the county for some overpasses to make the area of Linwood across the freeway more pedestrian-friendly than it is right now. If you try and get from the area near Michaels, for example, over to the area by Barnes and Noble in that area, that's a long walking distance. There isn't a really easy way to get over there. It's not very pedestrian-friendly. So we're talking about an overpass, pedestrian overpass bridge there. So that's critical, that we get that infrastructure in place. Beyond that, really ensuring that the area around the light rail link, easy access to the freeways that we have. We don't want to have commuters going through our neighborhoods. We want to make sure people can walk to those facilities. We want to make sure that, the promenade that we're discussing. And finally, we're talking about having a Linwood City Center Park, a huge, huge draft. You think about the demographic, we'd like to come into Linwood over the next 15 years. Having a large city center park where people can socialize, they can get out, and I realize our weather is inclement, but we're used to it up here. But people can take their pets out, they can meet their neighbors out there, they can just walk and enjoy being outdoors. So that's a huge investment that I'm very, very much in favor of, and I think will pay huge returns to Linwood when we're able to get that in place.
Excellent. All right. This next question is kind of like a, it's a more fun what-if kind of question for you, but we'll start with Patrick and we'll go to Nas. If given a $500,000 grant to use in Linwood, how would you allocate it in the best interest of residents?
Well, today, it depends on when the $500,000 landed, but if it landed today, I would absolutely use that to address the eviction issues that we face for so many people in the city right now. There is a huge portion of our population that, through no fault of their own, is facing very difficult home issues right now. And I would make sure it was well-vetted, and the vetting process would be difficult and challenging, but I would make sure that it was fair. And we help those families, where this is their home, this is their support, their family's here, their clergy's here, they love the city and they want to live here, they just need some help to make sure that they can continue living here. So I would ensure, one, that we take care of those people in a way that's fair. After that, I would definitely invest that in the park. I think a park, big, successful cities in our area are those that have that central park, a gathering place, a sense of community, a place where people can come together for the big holidays, enjoy one another's company. And Linwood does have a lot of parks, but we don't have a large gathering point. We really need that. So I would create a big, beautiful park, lots of covered space for when the weather's not great, but otherwise, lots of pet space, easy walkable, great art in the area. That's how I would spend the money.
Excellent. And then Nas, if you were given a $500,000 grant to use in Linwood, how would you allocate it for the best interest of the residents?
I would collaborate with Verden Health, because their focus is on preventive care. And I think the health of the community is very important, and what we saw after the pandemic, during the pandemic, I think it's very important that we work on the preventive care with Verden. And I think the most return on investment is on preventive work. So I think that for bringing healthcare equity for me, that would be well-spent money right there, to take care of the health of our community. Also, I would maybe use a very little amount of it to do some green space for environmental equity. I think there has been a study that I've mentioned before in one of my other interviews as well, that in cities, there is a definite disparity and inequity between the economically-challenged people versus the non-economically-challenged people with having more green space, and therefore allowing them to be healthier. So Verden would be my first choice, and Tweed would be my second choice.
Well, this is a good opportunity to ask you this question, Nas, and then pass it off to Patrick, because there is a lot of discussion about the term equity, but what does equity mean to you?
Equity is, the definition of equity is to make sure that we understand each person's circumstance. I don't know if you've seen the slide that talks about equity versus equality, and it shows the different steps that are available for different people to have access to the ballpark. And the most important thing for me in equity is to provide opportunities that can result in an equal outcome. Equal outcome is what we are looking for in equity, and it's very important to understand the difference between equity and equality, and making sure that we provide what is needed to have the outcome that we are looking for. And equity is very important to me, as I was the Chair of Diversity Equity and Inclusion for City of Linwood.
Excellent. And Patrick, for you, same question. There is a lot of discussion around the term equity, but what does equity mean to you?
So when our country was founded, so many of the immigrants came to the United States or to America at the time, but to the United States because of their unequal access to opportunity in the old world. So much of where people had wealth, power, and opportunity was based on what family they were born into, who they were related to. This country was founded on the concept of equal opportunity. That means that individuals, based on their interest and their interest in where they want to go, what they want to achieve, and then their interest in investing in that, how much effort they want to put into it, would decide how far they could get ahead in life, what their eventual outcomes would be. To me, equity is about equal opportunity. We need to examine any barriers that exist in the City of Linwood, but outside of Linwood as well, because we can partner with the state in this, and we have. We need to examine what barriers exist, and how can we, as a legislative body in Linwood, address those barriers, and either remove the barriers or provide assistance to mitigate those barriers, so that individuals who have equal opportunity have equal barriers to success. And that means, in my view, remove as many barriers as we possibly can to make people successful and still have a harmonious society, but equal opportunity. It's what our country is based on, it's what makes us successful, it's what gives us the opportunity to have the freedoms that we have today.
Excellent. So next question to you, Patrick, is if there's ever a budget shortfall or a recession, what recommendations would you present on how to mitigate the shortfall?
We always have budget shortfalls, although it may not seem like we do. In fact, just this last Monday, we were talking about road construction and repaving. It's infrastructure conversation. Which roads have been paved, which ones need to be paved, which ones haven't been paved? And the city planners, they made the point that some of our roads, had we repaired them a few years ago, the cost for those repairs would be far less than it is today, because the cost grows exponentially as time goes on, and those roads are not maintained. So we always have a budget shortfall. We don't always run out of money because we budget, but we always have a budget shortfall. If we were into a situation where, for our most basic things, where the money we have for what we need today was insufficient, given where Linwood is at, infrastructure really is paramount to me. So making sure that people, that there's a walkable city, that alleviates a lot of the financial burdens that people have. If you don't have to buy a car, because you can walk to rapid transit, you can walk to light rail, you can walk to all of the retail that you need, that's a huge financial help to members of our community. Also, it's huge environmentally. It doesn't wear out our roads as much, so the city expenses on road maintenance and sidewalks and such as that goes way down as well. So that would be where I would invest, is making sure that we're a mobile city, we're a pedestrian-friendly city, we're environmentally safe, so that those financial impacts are mitigated for the population.
Excellent. And then Nas, I'll reread the question for you.
Yes.
If there's ever a budget shortfall or a recession, what recommendations would you present on how to mitigate the shortfall?
I want to give a shout-out to the Finance Department at City of Linwood and Mayor Nicholas Smith for going through this hardest pandemic and still managing to do such a great job. As you all know, our Finance Department since 2017 has been named one of the best finance departments in the country, and they've gotten the award that shows for it. And so I think they've done a really good job on that so far. But if I was to propose something in this unforeseen, terrible situation that you are talking about, I would put a hiring freeze. I would put a stop on hiring people and make sure that we can cut some of the programs that we have without losing staff. I think it's very important for people to continue to have their jobs. And so I think those were the two things that I would do. But again, I think they've done a wonderful job in our Finance Department.
Excellent. So this next question, it does have a bit of context before the actual question, so if you need me to reread anything, let me know. But this goes to you first, Nas. Earlier this year, the Washington State Legislature passed a series of police reform laws regarding use of force. Overwhelmingly, law enforcement officers throughout the state argue that these new laws inhibit them from catching criminals and keeping communities as well as themselves safe. Would you support a resolution requesting the governor, the Washington State Legislature, and the Attorney General to assist in providing clarification of these new law enforcement standards and requirements? of these new law enforcement standards and requirements?
No, I will not support the resolution for that, because I trust the fact that our governor and our attorney, General Attorney Bob Ferguson, and our governor Jay Inslee, and all the people that have worked on that legislation, which are Representative Cindy Ryu, Senator Jesse Solomon, all the representatives that we, the people, have chosen and elected to be in these bodies, to make this decision. I think, as a whole, as representatives of our communities, they have studied, researched, and decided that this is the best plan of action. Therefore, I will support that, and I will not ask it to be any different. And I think they have thoroughly thought about this, and they have done the research to make sure that they continue to keep our communities safe. And that is what they have chosen, and I will support and respect that.
Well, if, if it's okay, I'd like to ask a follow-up question then.
Go ahead.
Regarding public safety, what do you think the city is doing right, and where might there be opportunity for improvement?
Public safety, as far as our police department is concerned, or?
It's open, open to general public safety, so.
Okay, could you repeat that question?
Absolutely. Regarding public safety, what do you think the city is doing right, and where might there be opportunity for improvement?
There's always opportunity for improvement, that is for sure. And I think it's important, as we grow and as our city grows, that we continue to grow the safety of our public, and to make sure that our public is safe, and working in collaboration with the police department, mental health, and the issues that we are facing with homelessness. I think it's very important for us to be proactive in these terms and be ahead of the game to make sure that our community remains safe.
Thank you. And then, do you want me to reread some of this context for that larger question? Okay, so I'll just, would you support a resolution requesting the governor, the Washington State Legislature, and Attorney General to assist in providing clarification of these new law enforcement standards and requirements?
Absolutely. No question at all in my mind. I would be a very strong proponent of that request. In fact, I would make it a very strong request. Legislators have a history of unintended consequences. Well-intent, well-meaning actions, but since they don't actually live on the streets and they don't actually live the law enforcement life, there are unintended consequences for legislation which they pass. So, I'll give you a classic example. Currently, under the way the legislation sits, if I were arrested and a police officer were going through my pockets, and I gave consent to ensure that I didn't have anything dangerous, and he pulled out a packet of meth from my pants, I could say, "I don't know how that got there, that's not mine," and I could not be prosecuted for it. It is insane to me that it's in my pants that I'm wearing, and I could simply claim, "These are somebody else's pants, I have no idea how that got there." If you extrapolate that, say I was pulled over for speeding, and a police officer heard muffled thumps from the trunk of the car, and I opened the car and there's somebody in the trunk, I could claim, "I don't know how they got there, it's not my car." And I could not be prosecuted for that, because of the way the laws are written right now. So, I have a lot of friends in the police force, we talk about this law of unintended consequences all the time, and I, I won't use names of the police force, they know who I am, I know who they are. They are a fantastic group of individuals, and without fail, every one of them that I have spoken to, one-on-one across the table, they all agree, unintended consequences, well-meaning legislation, but it is really creating risk for the community in that what could otherwise be crimes that are stopped ahead of time through normal police action are not being prosecuted by the police because of these new laws that have been put in place. We have fantastic police officers. Our congregation, we had a recent event, we invited the police down, it was just a kind of a carnival. The local community officers were there, they're meeting the youth. This is important. We have got to make sure our community partners with, with our law enforcement, and our law enforcement wants to have that legislation revisited to make sure the unintended consequences are accounted for.
Excellent. Well, and I want to give you an opportunity to answer the same follow-up question I asked, Nas. Regarding public safety, what do you think is something the city is doing right, and where might there be opportunity for improvement?
Our law enforcement works really hard to be out in the community and to be friendly in the community. They attend events all over our city, they're building relationships. But I really like the partnership that we have with the social and mental health care experts right now. This is really key to our success in dealing with, particularly in the homeless communities. Our law enforcement officers are great about getting the social care workers right there with them to meet with those individuals, and identify who wants help, right now, today, and then getting them from where they are to where that help is. I also love the concept that has been put forward in the Community Justice Center of building mental and substance abuse directly adjacent to the jails, because as Representative Lauren Davis commented, when inmates are able to receive help while they're incarcerated right then, their ability to heal and not have recurrence after they're out of jail is exponentially higher than if they are released and then someone tries to go get them and bring them back to those types of, those types of facilities.
Excellent. Well, I just have one more question before we move on from this topic. I'll ask Nas first, and then pass it off to Patrick. What is your stance on defunding the police?
I don't think we should defund the police, but I do think that we should be using the funds in doing other things for our community. Linwood Police Department has done an excellent job by hiring a new social worker. This was done under Chief Davis, a couple of years ago, to deal with the homelessness issue, and making sure that issues, mental health issues and homeless issues are not acted with criminal intent, that we make sure that our police officers don't have to deal with things that are not really their jobs to do. So, I do think that we need to be creating other departments and use these funds to make sure that we train our officers and hire social workers that can deal with the issues that are non-criminal issues. That, that way, we can keep the safety of our community and make sure that the police department continues to grow and help the community to be safe. However, I think it's very important to have social workers, maybe psychologists, maybe people that know how to deal with drug issues and drug overdose, and making sure that we have those facilities and those departments that can help with the safety of our community is very important.
Excellent, thank you. What is your stance on defunding the police?
No, adamantly no, strongly no. We're going to have huge population growth here in Linwood. You were talking about the number of units, 9,000 some odd units. How many people is that coming into the city? We absolutely have to make sure that not only do we fund our police as they are, but we continue to fund them corresponding to that growth of population. We're also seeing, there's more and more push of criminal elements coming from outside of Linwood. We have to make sure that by properly funding the police, and not only funding them, but supporting them. Funding is fine, you get the dollars for them, but as leadership, we have got to say, "Linwood is a safe place. Linwood is a place where we support our police officers, we support our first responders, we support our law enforcement, there are a lot of types of law enforcement. We lead, we value them, they put their lives on the line for us, we value them, they're important to us. We need to make sure that we support them." As Nas was saying, there are a lot of different ways that they can help the community, working with social, getting mental and substance abuse, and taking a more gentle approach towards individuals who are driven by circumstances rather than driven by choice, making sure that we're dealing in a very empathetic way. But absolutely, support the police, make sure they're funded properly, not just adequately, but properly. It's critical to Linwood, it's critical to our future, it's critical to what we want Linwood to be.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for giving us your time and being with the Linwood Times here today to answer these questions. We want to give you an opportunity to issue some closing statements now. We'll start with Patrick and move on with Nas.
Great. Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody today, but specifically the Linwood Times. I love, I actually commented tomorrow quite a few times, I love the way that you cover our community, that you cover a great number of aspects, not just the frontline headlines, but the people's stories. You bring to light where we need to grow, where we need to change, where we need to improve, but you also share the beauty and the vision of what Linwood is and what it can become. So, fantastic organization, fantastic media. I, I really am impressed by what you're able to do. Linwood has a fantastic future, but if we don't get ahead of this growth now, if we don't plan for it properly, we will get railroaded. We will not be a city that's benefited from growth. We'll be a city that's crushed by growth. That means get our infrastructure in place. If we do our infrastructure, we're going to bring jobs. There are jobs very close to Linwood, that if we can get that light rail in place and those high-rise buildings, keep them out of our neighborhoods, keep them in the city center, people can walk out their door, get on the bus or light rail, they can go to those high-paying jobs. Those high-paying jobs come to us right here in Linwood, those residents will be here. And all the benefit of those jobs, right here in Linwood, will help us grow. That will be more economic benefit to us, to our city. It will allow us to control this growth, manage the growth, and really make Linwood a hallmark for not only Snohomish County, but I think for the state. Huge opportunity, unrivaled, that I think our area's seen for, you know, for decades.
Excellent, thank you. Nas, closing statements?
Okay, first off, I want to thank you, Mario and Beau, for this opportunity to have this meeting, thank you for doing that. My top three priorities, as I mentioned, is to make sure that we stay ahead of the growth and we continue to manage the growth and the infrastructure, and make sure that the safety of our city continues to be good, where all are welcome, and make sure that we work on healthcare equity. I am proud to say that I have the support of the leadership of the City of Linwood currently with endorsements such as Mayor Nicholas Smith, Councilmember Christine Frisell, Councilmember Ruth Ross, as well as State Representatives Cindy Ryu, Representative Lauren Davis, and Senator Jesse Solomon. I would like to work for the City of Linwood. I would like to contribute to the City of Linwood, that's where my home is, and that's where I hope I can be of use and service to my community.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.